Thank you. Everybody, when everyone rise to the platform, leave it. I'm glad we did this. To the flag of the American States, there are, excuse me, repelling, from which it stands. What I need is, under, maybe this is all, maybe do, just, just. Thank you, everybody. I'll use my mic so that, owl touches me. Um, all right, we have four council presidents this evening. And our first order of business is two or three minutes from our last meeting. Any discussion or edits on these?
Madam Chair, I move we accept the town council meeting minutes dated May fourteenth, two thousand twenty. Any more to add, group?
Send, sorry. All those in favor say aye, John.
Aye.
Jeff.
All abstain.
Oh, yeah, you are here, thank you. Melissa, bye. Bye.
Why don't you guys talk?
Motion passes, three, zero, and one, one extension. Okay, signing the treasurer's warrant, enter our business.
Madam Chair, I move we sign the treasurer's warrant in the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-eight cents, dated five, twenty-three, twenty-two.
Second, thank you, any discussion? All those in favor, sign the treasurer's warrant, say aye, John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Bye. Aye. Motion passes, four, zero. And next, we have reports of presentations, Peter, thank you for coming tonight.
So, good evening, again, I'm Peter McGovern, architect with Oak Point Associates. Um, since I was last here, we met with, um, Tim, Jennifer, and Mallory to go over our concept plan. We have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow to, um, discuss the tweaks to that plan. And then after that, I believe we are ready for a, um, concept workshop with the town council, and I see that it's maybe gonna be voted on later this week where we can present that plan to the whole council. Um, so, the plan, I think, still utilizes the existing space within the building here. Um, it really organized and located the different departments with better adjacencies, just better serve the public. It creates that public, uh, staff boundary that is probably needed for security and, um, privacy. And then it allows a force for the building to stay open during the renovation, which I think is a big plus. And now that we are close, and then after that concept, we will really have to get, take the time to delve in to see what we can do to afford it. I think it will be under budget, and we'll develop a grocery list of price options to make sure that, you know, well, we can't have the retractable roof on the town council for beautiful days like this. But we will definitely have AC up here, so, that's gonna be good. And so that, not only will the, your reorganize, reorganizing of the departments and space, but we'll also be looking at the envelope and the mechanics. So we will have AC up there, hopefully. And, um, the building envelope and facade improvements, so, um, right. Always the most sustainable building is the one you have in use already. That's it, any questions?
No questions, we'll add one thing that I just wanna make sure that's home with everybody, and the, the, what we've been discussing, things that, so that pretty much all of the public services that folks come into the building for, towns are, that are, are all looking on the first floor, would be looking on the first floor, it's been important, so. Thank you. Great, thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, um, next, your public comment, anyone who wants to speak anything on your agenda? And, phone? Okay. No public comments, um, unfinished business number one, here at America Award. This is one that we had cabled from our last council meeting. Um, Melissa, do you wanna speak to this at all? Or no, okay, so, um, the, the nomination was for, um, all right, try to match you, what? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, originally, the only, um, nomination that we received in the Spirit of America Award was for Mal Kenny. And, um, while Mal Kenny is undoubtedly deserving of this award, as he is the epitome of the spirit of not just America, but certainly of our town with everything that he's involved in, from back in the day youth sports to presentate on the work with the VFW and the veterans and just the school system. Um, but Mal Kenny is also a humble man and would be a little, um, upset if he was singled out for, um, this award, um, as he is part of, um, an important group in our town. Um, that is, that does everything that he does too. And I think, um, as much as I would love to award this to Mal, I think he might throw me a throat punch if we did. Uh, so, I would like to suggest that we actually nominate the, um, South River VFW post number five, seven, four, four uh, for the award, as Mal is a part of that group. Uh, he does everything that they do, they do everything that he does, and they're just a staple to our community in so many ways, and I think they are deserving of the Spirit of America.
Any other, any other, Ben? Madam Chair, can you repeat that post of our business? Uh, I'm running out, five, seven, four, four. Thank you, good. Uh, thank you, Melissa, I, um, I agree with that, um, so, all, we're gonna make a motion to nominate, um, VFW post fifty-seven, forty-four for the twenty twenty-four Spirit of America Award.
Second.
Thank you, motion of second, um, this will be, for discussions, this will be an award that will be handed out next year, we're in that off, one, one off, one year off cycle with our annual funding. Uh, okay, motion on the table, any other person's discussion?
Other than Melissa, thank you for bringing that up, appreciate it.
All right, all those in favor say aye, John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Aye, motion goes four, zero. Thank you. And unfinished business number two, we're scheduling of, um, our public hearing for the vehicle traffic ordinance. Um, just a lot going on lately, and we just missed this, no worries, we'll regurgitate. Um, any other discussion or anything on this before we go? I'll go ahead and make a motion to vote to hold the public hearing to update our vehicle traffic ordinance, chapters one thirty, section eight, and one thirty, section thirteen, on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty PM here at Town Hall.
Second.
We have motion of second, discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye, John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, we're here. This is who's fastest media. Um, new business number one, uh, Liberty Street having weight limit, uh, Tim, can you brief us on this one?
So, because we had postponed, um, the public hearing, postponed the vote, spoke to the lawyer, and asked, with my authority powers, only allow me to post until June first, November fifteenth, to June first. I can postpone, there is under the ordinance, um, section one thirty dash twenty-nine, the subsection one, the vehicle traffic ordinance that does allow you as the council, post a, uh, temporarily, post road for as long as necessary until whatever processes we need to get through, so, uh, I'm recommending that we, we make a motion, postpone from June first, when mine runs out, till August thirty-first, I give this plenty of time to have a public hearing, have a vote, left thirty days for it to take effect. Become effective, and still checks the stream, probably.
Okay, so, just to, to clarify, for the public, um, essentially, what the town manager that needs to do is to, um, temp, make, make a motion to temporarily post Liberty Street due to weight limit, um, which normally would, typically would be done through an ordinance, but given the explanation, um, Tim just gave, we can make a motion as kind of a one-off to cover the summer, and then we'll get the work done right there. But that, you'll be in those departments. All right, any other questions, discussion? All right, I'll make a motion to order the temporary closing of Liberty Street to heavy vehicles and access to twenty-two thousand pounds from June first to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, due to safety issues raised by the increase of commercial traffic pursuant to section one thirty dash twenty-nine E one of the vehicles and traffic ordinance.
Second.
You have a second, all those in favor, or any discussions, are, all those in favor, say aye, John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, four, zero. And moving on to new business number two, um, as Peter mentioned in his presentation, um, we are needing to schedule a workshop with Oak Point Associates and the council, um, for June eleventh at the police department. Um, because of June eleven, we canceled our council meeting due to the election, this building will be occupied during the election, police station. Um, questions, does that work for people?
Whose idea was it to take our night off, okay?
Not mine, but I'm assuming it was Tim. Um, all right, I'll make a motion to schedule a workshop with Oak Point Associates for the Town Hall project on June eleven, at Police Department, uh, meeting room at six PM.
Second.
Six PM, where's everybody? All those in favor, say aye, John.
Aye.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, we're here. Wow. Eleven minutes, and now we have time to choose, poor. I think that's a record, it is, I think.
Highway, the trucks were moving around, police found the rest of a couple people, find about, that's quite a quality. Those portions, can't tell you, planning boards not planning anything, go all the way, very. Um, so the first thing is, June third will start the work on Hoover Sands Road, the famous storm damage. Job should take about two weeks, I have a memo for the council, the road will be closed. June seventeenth, you start, uh, the work deck on the deck of the Belmont Bridge, that should take two weeks, and that will leave, or will it also close that?
When is that, sorry?
Is that?
Sorry, when is that, when is that starting?
June seventeen.
Okay.
Well, we'll be posting it all over the place and sending out.
That's gonna affect me a lot.
Um, thorough road work is on hold while wave powering is only allowed to move, one of the last parts of it. Um, they worked on the shoulders of the old spots all around the north end of town, and the box labor position has been posted, is now open. The gentleman with the box position left for jobs is better paid. Police found that three arrests, thirteen accidents, fifty-two traffic stops. York County Sheriff's Office, Maine State Police had a motor vehicle grant, and along with South Borough, I took in a lot of stops from Rawlsford lines of Central Traffic Surf, Surfing Corridor. Um, Chief has posted his full-time ops positions. Five times, that seventeen calls in the last two weeks, two hundred and six yet to date. Uh, Chief Hamel took the certified fire inspector one certification class last week, hosted by York County MA Alfred. Uh, five, one, and two class, five, five, training candidate, one and two class being completed, has completed most of the portion of the portion, moving outside to begin hands-on training. Code enforcement has issued three building permits, six funding permits, two violations, one investigation on potential violation, fifteen inspections. They're working on redressing the roads, uh, there's thirteen roads they're working on currently. Planning board, the next regularly meeting on June fifth, will be one major home occupation, a water motor service owner in front of them. And a public area for their female floodplain ordinance, once that's done, it'll be moved on to the council, so you'll do the, we'll all take care, we're gonna get that done, I think that, I mean.
At the library, Sophia, the library chief was hired, and she will be starting the first of July. On June twelfth, at one o'clock, the summer reading program will kick off at the library. Recreation has hired five new camps down close that will start this summer, the summer program. The strawberry run rate spits and T-shirts have been ordered, and registrations are right on track, as what we'd expect. The seniors, uh, who enjoyed a Ricky Nelson tribute trip to Danvers last week, the memorial luncheon is tomorrow, they expect to go, eighty-five to ninety people. As something, the KRT staff has resumed all data collection in South Row, after being pulled away to help other towns with their permanent classes. They are still working in the downtown area and are also working on Fridays, yeah. Postcards have been sent out to seven hundred and forty-nine properties, with two thousand six hundred and forty left to give. The next round of postcards will go out sometime in June, and, um, that will be more in the southern portion of town for those next group of postcards. In the town clerk's office, there is a customer service position posted. The entire end of reality attended Moses training, just representing fishing and ATV registrations last Thursday in front throwing. The transfer station, they haul away two loads of leaves from the transfer stations, not getting more to breathe. Economic development, the downtown environmental station workshop on May sixteenth was well-attended, and the residents have now prioritized projects of each of the categories. The next meeting is on Monday, June third, at six o'clock here, coming to Town Hall, third part. Finance, HR, safety, I've had twelve business meetings in the last two weeks, and twenty-eight staff meetings. ADP is our new payroll and timekeeping software, and the employees went live this week, punching the time clocks, and we are still working on somebody came to significant events.
Can I ask a question on that? Do we need to do anything?
Yeah, we're gonna automatically set up.
Our side.
For you guys, yeah.
We'll set it, thank you.
Um, if you want us to check stuff, we have this thing. Um, we have sixty-six possible leads, if those people don't pay their property tax by June sixth. There is a safety inspection by name municipal association that is gonna happen this Saturday, they're coming to the town hall, library, and community center, both from the Red and Fireside. This morning, I met with Jay Readymark, our super consultants in heavy excavating at Hoover Sands Road to review the spoken work for the FEMA project, fixing that thing, remember, I'm fixing the road. Uh, we are still working on inputting the new budget into the accounting software, and I am starting to work with SMP DC for a grant, fifteen thousand dollars, for green and energy efficient upgrades. Considering a few options that would fall under the program, such as moving charging stations for the town, county house museum is in need of windows. And solar panels at the police department are some of the ideas that I've come up with, to see if it fits into the program. And there would be a public hearing for this, um, the community to be able to discuss the options in September, so more to come on that.
Um, under administration, I had ten business meetings, twenty-five staff meetings. Um, for our customer service survey, survey recognitions, I had one for the transfer station, it was a five. Jeff, one for Jenny McCabe, it was a five, one for L Ford, one for Bernie Spencer, and they were all five. Um, I'm now three citizens, one regarding attack payment. One about a washboard issue, one about past complaints to the basketball here, means they continuously play basketball in basketball. What's that?
I, I feel like there's always kids there, night and day, always.
To bet, it's a basketball court.
Yeah, getting very relevant. It is, yeah.
Well, that would be a complaint, using that. Um, multiple phone calls on this, town attorney reference, both personnel issues from the town meeting, and several follow-up issues with lawn issues. FY twenty-four budget review, we're doing that right now, watching the budget as it winds down, Jen's taking care of the next year, I will take care of this year. Uh, work on negotiating, working on, with thirteen other towns to negotiate the transfer station contract, unfortunately, we're down to only two vendors now. Um, started at four, down to two, the solid nickel meaning, and we'll continue to negotiate. Discussing superintendent, all the town meeting at the high school next year. Um, so, in that discussion, we talked about what happened here, uh, the other night, and we had, how many, Diane?
Uh, the voter roll was about hundred and sixty-six, but I would say that there was at least a little bit over two hundred in attendance.
Right, so the issue for us was, we talked about earlier, that we have to evacuate them in a hurry, trying to get all these people down to stay well, a lot, not a lot, but, but, you know, I don't know, ten, fifteen, I didn't keep count, I kept very busy elevating, so a lot of them came here, so if we had a true emergency, trying to get people out of here, it's gonna be an issue. Um, the fire chief has done a recent inspection here, chairman of the room is not four hundred, capacity now three hundred by the updated fire codes, we're gonna change that. But the, the great question is, what happens if we have to shut the room off, that would violate people's rights to vote. So, um, in the answering that, to my question, I discussed with superintendent, about holding the town meeting at the high school next hearing auditorium, he said absolutely no problem. He said, try to decide before September, so I'll, you know, so I would request that, if you all put that on the agenda. If that's your wishes, we'll be the auditorium, it holds over six hundred people, they all set it all up. I think it would be, you know, if we're anticipating this kind of a crowd, much safer than moving. So then, the follow-up phone calls of the town attorney, who has been waiting for all of the town meetings, well, what happens if you can't, if that night, if we had gone over and we had closed the room? So under the main moderator's manual, there's a page on there that talks about that, or if you were for some reason, another emergency, you have to evacuate, to stop the meeting. So what you would have to do, the council has to make a motion, it would read, temporarily adjourn the town meeting to a date certain, time and location be given, you post that time and location. The reason being to conclude items on the town warrant dated, whatever the town warrant. That gets you out of post, reposting town warrant, and it's just a continuum of that night, so you could say, you don't have to give a five or ten day notice, you could do it the next night. Or you could do it, you know, a week from now, so it's that simple moment, so, whenever we're not here, and it ever happens, that's it, it's very plausible, I'm sure, like, like something to back through that. Cause they feel that all that in the legislature, but, that's the answer, we would have just temporarily, uh, temporarily adjourned, they'll say, just make sure you don't, um, you don't close the meeting, so then, you close the meeting without loading on the warrant, which is good. Now you don't have a decent, you have to go back and have another, rewrite all the warrants with the town meeting, so this language is very specific, so, that's all I have, that, I have the notices of with Jay's posted. In one D to view, that says, when the town, the roads are gonna be closed. We will post this again, this will be on our Facebook page, will be on the town website, we'll get it out there as much as we possibly can. Sure, I'll be in the Seacoast Journal, and on the South Borough bulletin, and South Borough reporter, South Borough reporter.
Do you, I, I just don't remember, do you all usually when, like, a road has to be closed, in our town, to, to be posted, like, the manky little sign, of ready to stay signed? Do we post anything that says, like, it's going to be closed soonish?
We can, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll, we'll that over.
Yeah, I feel like especially for the Belmont one, I just feel like that's like such a.
I hope they pay better attention than the ones that said, my little bird did twenty-two thousand pounds.
Yeah, but.
That logging truck was a twenty-three thousand pounds.
That's all, I have a chapter of brief executive.
Okay, um, let's just give council comments, real quick, uh, Jeff, the editing? Melissa?
Um, so speaking of road closures and bridges, kind of being, I just got a quick question for Tim, um, a resident actually reached out and noticed that, um, Emery's Bridge Road has now been posted in a section to twenty-two tons, and, uh, she was, one of the question was, is it because of the flooding, that, like, why did we just all of a sudden post Emery's Bridge? Cause they're trying to not wear bridges.
It's a culvert, and that sign just went.
Right.
I just noticed it today, driving by.
That's the one we talked about at the last meeting, the state DOT, and with the, it was in my manager's notes, they had given us, that was one of the ones who identified it as, it's a culvert.
Okay.
And it's gonna identify it, even though it's a culvert, it's a bridge, and it, the state wanted it posted because it's rusted out. Remember I said we're gonna, it's gonna be one of them, we're probably gonna have to, uh, metal tin, it's rusted out, we're gonna have to make it concrete, we're gonna have to make a, like a concrete filler actually to build that. That's gonna cost money, and we're gonna probably have to get grants for it. That'd be, that would probably be four to six hundred thousand to replace it.
Yeah.
That's why I can post, the state DOT can post, whatever else to post.
Okay, and then she did follow it up with making me aware that there are grants and funds available from that type of work, maybe we were I'm going to get it fixed, so, done, it's up, awesome. And then my other question is, because a lot of acquiring minds want to know, there was a significant amount of county sheriff presence in our town the last week or so, and some citizens were just wondering, is that, were they just spreading the love in the community, and like, wearing South River for a couple of weeks, then went to North River, or did we call for assistance? We were just kind of wondering why there was a lot of sheriffs.
So, under the police department, as I said, York County Sheriff's Office. The Maine State Police had a motor vehicle grant, I took in a lot of traffic stops, it was a grant, traffic stop grant, that's what it was. So they got a traffic stop grant, which pays overtime, they put a bunch of cars on the road, they identify and spot. Then they, they put all the cars up there, attacked it right out for a week and banged everybody.
Yeah, they did. Last Wednesday, there were six sheriffs between here and Sanford and Buffalo.
Yeah, how many did you see, Diane?
The other day, when we did the work, I counted nine crews in total, one being state policeman, four being sheriffs, the rest were all local.
And they, they even asked us, if they had some money, give us, they'll be, put a couple of guys up there, so, yeah, that's what it was, the traffic, traffic detail. Sheriff's department had funded a grant, just it was through the government, room four, the bridge here, all the way to San.
And I do pay attention to your managers' minutes, I just like, it must have gone in one ear and out the other, so, just for the record, thank you.
Actually, I want to thank Tim and Jeff for all your work, all the long hours in that budget, I know staff had a lot to do, and also, Mark and Ed, both chiefs. Fantastic work, they are like extremely easy for a very well-packed town meeting. So, thank you for that, Diane and you, your assistants were fabulous getting people in, getting rejected. We started forty-five minutes late, which put a lot of people in this group, so we will see you also. And then to our chair, Valerie, thank you for all the work you put in, the lead, handout you put in, it made life very easy, and it answered ninety percent of the questions. So, thank you for all the work you did also.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's it.
All I have is just saying, you know, I went to town last week, packed house, but it was good, it was good to have that, I mean, it took us a while to get started, but good, high voter turnout, in my opinion, is always a good thing. That's all I have, thank you, everyone, I'll go ahead and we, we need to go into executive session, so I'll make that motion, motion to go into executive session, subject one, MRFA four oh five dot six A, personnel. Can I get a second?
Sure.
Thank you, all those in favor, say aye, John. Thank you for coming.